We're gonna go ahead and bring our work, city council workshop into order. Mr. James, would you just call the role of the council?
Mr. Mayor, before we have roll call, I'd like to announce that we have technical difficulties with our streaming, and the meetings will be aired at the conclusion of this meeting. And I will do that again at the seven o'clock meeting.
Okay, that's understood. Okay.
Councilmember James Whitmore. Councilmember Mrs. Smallwood. Councilmember Alex Heath. Councilmember Pat Allen. Councilmember Linda Davis. Mayor Pro Tim Hattie Portis Jones.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a call.
We're gonna go straight into the workshop. What's gonna happen, we're gonna, we're gonna have a total of thirty minutes allowed for the first workshop, because we have a second workshop we have to do at six thirty. So, Mr. Jackson, you'll have fifteen minutes to present it there, but leave enough time for any members of council who want to ask any questions. Who was yours?
That's great. That's what I love about Fairburn. Mayor and, and council, it's always great to be before you. Appreciate the invitation to talk to you all about something that Fairburn is perfectly situated to engage. Not sure what screen I'm looking at. So, Mayor, electric vehicles is becoming a mainstream. In fact, as I drove up and looked at the, into your parking lot, some of you all have EVs. And your constituents have EVs. And so, I just wanna take a brief few minutes. I had an extensive conversation with Mayor Pro Tim about EV charging stations and what Fairburn can do. Back last year...
Representative Jackson, before you get started in your presentation, could you just tell us who you are and why you are presenting on EVs?
Yes, yes, yes. For the record, I am State Representative Derek Jackson. I represent District sixty-four, and I've had the pleasure these past six years. And I represent seven municipalities, Fairburn being one of them. And one of the things I've discovered these last six years, as a state representative, I've also excelled to leadership. So, I'm the vice chair of the Fulton County delegation. I'm also the vice chair of the Georgia Legislative Black Caucus, which is the largest black caucus in the, in the nation. And, and for those who really don't know me, I'm a twenty-two-year retired naval officer. I spent ten years also in corporate America, working at GE. And again, six years as a state representative. So, last year, Mayor and council members, President Biden mentioned about this one trillion-dollar infrastructure package. We're not gonna talk about the entire one trillion dollars tonight. We're just gonna talk about the seven point five billion dollars and what Fairburn can possibly do. To be more specific, last November, Mayor and Council, Vice President Kamala Harris talked about specifically of that seven point five billion dollars, five hundred thousand EV charging stations to create this infrastructure across the United States. And when you think about that seven point five billion dollars, let's even narrow it down just a little bit more to two point five billion dollars. Just two weeks ago, Georgia, we've announced, well, we had GDOT to announce what we're going to do to go after that two point five billion dollars, or at least our fair share, if you will. And so, when you think about GDOT and how we're looking at building this infrastructure across Georgia to make sure all five hundred and thirty-seven cities are well taken care of. But you really have to look at, not all cities are created equal, and this is where Fairburn comes to play. See, Fairburn, you're perfectly situated on one of the main apparatus in Georgia, Interstate eighty-five. And so, when you think about EV charging stations, and we're thinking about a strategy to going after that two point five billion dollars, you all should be part of the conversation. And I'm gonna give you a contact where you all, Mayor, can reach out to GDOT specifically and let them know how Fairburn can play and be part of this strategy. But when you think about EV charging stations in Fairburn, your constituents are purchasing electric vehicles. I mean, right now is a perfect opportunity for all of us to purchase electric vehicles of all shapes, size, and flavors. So, when you think about the growth, and I'm no salesperson around EVs, I just wanna make sure that's clear. But I understand data. And when you look at this kind of growth over the past couple of years around electric vehicles and hybrids, and how our citizens, our constituents, are thinking about how they should move about in Georgia. Fairburn to be included, because that Interstate eighty-five goes exactly through your city. And so, that's a significant number, Mayor, when you look at eighty-nine percent growth. So, let's not kid ourselves. Our neighbors, our family members, our friends, military, corporations, they're all purchasing electric vehicles. So, how can you all be part of this? Well, Georgia has a Clean Air Act that we've been working on for quite some time. And when you look at costs compared to gas, that's part of it. You've heard Governor Kemp, where we subsided the gas tax a couple of times just to ease the burden off of our constituents, our friends, our neighbors, our coworkers. And this is the reason why, because when you look at emissions, you look at costs, when you just look at this mobility in Georgia, EV plays a significant part when you start talking about Georgians. And we're not, we don't have to go through all the details, Mayor, but you can clearly see that there's a vast difference when our citizens are paying nearly twenty-five hundred dollars per year in gas versus thirteen hundred dollars for fuel and maintenance for electric vehicle. I mean, you're simply cutting half of this discretionary income to help create savings for our citizens. So, what can Fairburn do? Well, EV charging stations are popping up all over. In fact, when you all built that brand-new parking ride on seventy-four, you placed some EV charging stations there. It would've been great to even have a bank full, right? Not just a few, because when you think about a parking ride, Georgians, Fairburn, citizens are gonna park their vehicle all day. But it would be a beautiful thing to have a row filled with EV charging stations. But you'll also see these EV charging stations popping up, Mayor and Council, all over the place, like grocery stores, hospitals, hotels with, Fairburn, you have a fair share of hotels, and other places, in public places, where we can really think outside the box and install these EV charging stations. Now, not all EV charging stations are created equal. There are three different types, and we don't need to get very wonky here. But for those who have electric vehicles, they clearly know, Mayor, that it would be great to be able to charge your vehicle in a matter of minutes, you know, you, you're on your way. So, just think about those who coming through Alabama, Florida, North Carolina, South Carolina, along Interstate eighty-five. They don't wanna spend a lot of time charging their vehicle. And so, level-three charging stations are great. And so, when you start to have your conversation with GDOT, and they start talking about level-one, level-two, level-three, this just gives you a macro perspective of what they're talking about, the various charging stations that are available out there in the marketplace. So, in the end, this is all about not only helping our constituents, those who are purchasing EV, but it also helps us as a state with our Clean Air Act, because in the end, it's all about making sure that we do our part today for a cleaner, healthier future tomorrow. And then, Ms. Miller, she will certainly take your call. She is the, our guru at GDOT that's putting this whole strategy together. And we need to make sure that Fairburn is part of this conversation when you start talking about where exactly we should be putting these EV charging station, how we can play a role here in Fairburn to make sure that when Georgia as a whole go after their fair share of that two point five billion dollars and is part of this five hundred thousand EV stations going across the United States, that Fairburn is represented and make sure that our constituent voice is heard. And so, Ms. Miller is the best point of contact, because she's the one that's in charge of putting this strategy together for all of Georgia. And with that, Mayor, that concludes my presentation, and I make myself available for any questions that you all may have.
I have one real quick question. My question's gonna be, the funding that you're, that you're referring to, the bucket, I guess, that it would come out of, has, has any city already been awarded?
To my, that's a great question, Mayor. To my understanding, no. You are seeing EV charging stations, but based on the timing and these dollars being made available, I mean, this is relatively new, right? Vice President Kamala Harris just mentioned specifically the goal just eight months ago. And so, we had EV charging stations already, part of a lot of cities, comprehensive plan, but none of it, to my knowledge, is part of this overarching strategy that Ms. Miller and, and others in GDOT will be going after.
Okay, and then one, and then I'm sorry, I come to council. My other question, in a situation where Fairburn has existing pumps over in the charging station, obviously, you refer, when you looked at the three different grades, I guess my question would be, will, will replacement cost, is that, is that an issue that you're replacing the existing for an upgrade with that? Do you know whether that's an issue?
Yeah, you know, that's a great question to ask Ms. Miller, to let her know that you already have some EV stations here. But I'm thinking, just anecdotally, that this effort is to bring forward new charging stations. So, that five hundred thousand is not designed to upgrade those that are already in place. That five hundred thousand is to basically create a new infrastructure network for EV charging stations across the United States.
Then, I apologize, Mr. Counsel, I'll come to you there. One last question. In the, in, just say for the sake of argument, and I wasn't here, I apologize, I wasn't here during the last award. Is there, let's just say X number, Fairburn receives X number of dollars. Is that, is that, would you end up, the award be based off of procurement processes? In this case, best bidder, best, almost just like we, we deal with other services, where we have to deal with a procurement process?
Right, so, and that's another excellent question. So, I'm not sure on that particular piece in terms of the procurement and how these dollars... I, I think Ms. Miller, right now, since we just announced this two weeks ago, on our efforts in terms of going to our fair share, that this is all in the infancy stage. I just wanna make sure, based on my conversation with Mayor Pro Tim, that you all, you know, at least are part of that strategy, right? Because when you talk about five hundred thirty-six cities, no, Ms. Miller is gonna be looking at all cities. But I wanna make sure that those who are on main apparatus like Fairburn, let her know where you all sit and why you need to be part of that conversation and part of that strategy.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna yield to any member of council, one, Ms. Davis?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Most of my questions were asked before I was on the stage. But one other thing that I wanted to ask is that, and this probably will be Mrs. Miller, you know, too, if I'm right, how will she decipher who gets, what city is in alignment to get the maximum usage of the stations? Or she will be in charge of determining that?
Right, so that's an excellent question, Ms. Davis. I think, you know, for the most part, the way I understand what we're gonna do, those cities that are on the main apparatus is, will be the first tier, because it only makes sense, not only for us, but for those who are passing through, because the way I understand how this EV charging station network is set up, that those who drive Tesla, for example, I'm not a, I don't have a Tesla, but these EV vehicles have the ability to be able to say, where's the nearest station? And most of those stations are based on the main apparatus. And so, I think, you know, in our strategy, that when you look at the main apparatus, eighty-five, two eighty-five, six seventy-five, so on so forth, those are the municipalities that we're gonna look at first in this first run of our strategy. Yes, ma'am?
Mr. uh, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Heath, and then I come to Mr. Whitmore.
Is this mainly gonna be concentrated, like, on the interstates, the recharging stations?
Good question, Mr. Heath. So, I think so. Here's the reason why I believe that to be true, because if you look at our GDOT five- and ten-year strategy, everything is gonna be based on the highway right now. I mean, in terms of our roads and our bridges, I mean, don't get me wrong, some of our state roads, obviously, will get some work and, 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 and carry out in that five- or two-year plan, you know, as we change, like, exits, you know, diamonds, as you all know about. So, we're just gonna include this part of that, because it only makes sense as we're building out the infrastructure of new roads and new bridges, that we add EV charging station to this process as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Whitmore's next.
Say, Rapp, how you doing?
How you doing, my friend?
Good, good. So, during the presentation, you did talk about level-one, two, and three. And you also mentioned about the parking ride with the carpooling and everything else, people get parked there and stay all day. That's not the design that some of us are looking for. Here's my example, because with a level-one at five miles an hour charge, okay, they have to sit there eighteen to twenty hours, all right, to get a full charge. The other thing is that, one of the purpose of getting superchargers, supercharging stations is, as you stated, those of us that have electric vehicles, when you plug in your, your destination, it shows you all of the various superchargers where you can charge, which means you can go and plug up in twenty, thirty minutes. You got eighty to ninety percent of your charge, and you can get on the road and start going again, which also means that while they're still sitting in our parking ride, from an economic standpoint, they're gonna be patronizing our businesses on seventy-four. So, that's the idea, having a designated area. And I'll give a prime example, up in East Point, they have probably about ten to twelve charging stations up there at the, I can't even think of the place right now.
Amcre Marketplace?
Amcre Marketplace, all right, which is new, as well as in Noonan. So, we have a couple of places that are strategically placed, but I think that Fairburn is perfectly situated right off of the main corridor, that we can draw some of this additional revenue coming into our businesses. So, I, I definitely love the three hundred amp, which is the level-three. And I know you sit on the energy committee, too, is that correct? So, you're hearing a lot about this, and I enjoyed having that conversation with you the other day. But I think that, right now, the, the best way for Fairburn to move forward, Mayor and Council, is to make sure that we look at level-three charging stations. And you also stated that this new infrastructure is new infrastructure. However, those are super-slow charging stations out there at the parking ride. So, and when, shucks, the electric company, Georgia Power, when they work with the other entities to get that approved there, we talked about putting superchargers there. However, it wasn't in the budget. So, that would be a good question for Ms...
Ms. Miller.
Ms. Miller as well, to replace current and expand, all right, so that we would have more than just the four that's sitting there, and it could be mighty beneficial for those that are traveling from Peachtree City, Tyrone, Fairburn, and all the other areas that's close to us as well, especially if they're coming down eighty-five, whether they're going north or south, Fairburn will be a destination stop. And that's what we're trying to achieve. That's one of the things that Mayor Pro Tim and I have had numerous conversations about. So, just throwing that additional information out there.
You know, to your point, Mr. Whitmore, I love the point, the essence of your point, that making it a destination, right? Because I have a lot of friends who live in Alabama, in full transparency, and they love to come up eighty-five during the football season. And they, and, and, and the reason why they know about Fairburn, all those fast-food restaurants you all have been putting right there on Exit sixty-one, right? Whereas, ten years ago, they blew right by Fairburn. It even, Fairburn wasn't even on the map. It wasn't like we moved Fairburn to the left or the right, we created a destination spot for Fairburn. And so, yes, you're exactly right. But I will also add to your statement, Mayor and Council, that I would not be quick to re-upgrade the existing infrastructure. I will lobby, recommend you all lobbying to Ms. Miller, saying, let's add two in existing infrastructure. So, now you add to your four, and you may add another ten, now you got fourteen. Why is that so important? Because the volume, which is the reason why I put in that slide, you're talking about eighty-nine percent growth in two years. That means citizens, right now, I mean, every time we have this gas pinch, myself included, I'm like, man, I gotta get me a charging, I mean, electric vehicle, right? We've been here before. And so, I just think we should add two. So, when you all, whoever you all designate to talk to Ms. Miller, talk about adding to, not in place of. And so, if you already got level-one and level-two charging station, just let her know, hey, we already have level-one, level-two. We want some level-three, so that way, we have a mixed use of charging stations to be able to accommodate anyone that needs a, a charge. For those who are gonna be there all day, park their vehicle, and they're gonna be there for a number of hours, they can use the level-one. But if they're only gonna be there twenty, thirty minutes, and they would need to come by, and their infrastructure reveals that Fairburn have a, a fair share of level-three, then they're gonna stop right there on Exit sixty-one.
I wanna go to Mayor Pro Tim before running time, because I had two more questions, but I wanna hear her speak about this.
You have about four minutes and fifty-four seconds.
Okay, thank, thank you so much, Mayor. And thank you, Representative Jackson, for responding to my request. The whole point of inviting you here was to give us some introduction, if you will, as a, a full body of the electric vehicle industry and what is going on, and the acceleration of it due to the Biden Infrastructure Bill, and that being his focus. I've had conversations with Mayor Avery about this opportunity and us, Fairburn, positioning ourselves to be able to take advantage of that. So, I really appreciate, you know, the broad perspective for which you have brought. And I appreciate even more the questions that have been asked by my colleague, because that says that they're thinking along the same lines already, even though we haven't been engaged in this. And then, thirdly, I want to say thank you, and that I appreciate even more that you recognize that Fairburn is situated to succeed. And that this tagline came about under Mayor Avery's previous administration when we did a rebranding of the city of Fairburn, because of where we're located, and being able to take advantage of that. So, again, thank you. And then, I would ask Mayor Avery if we could just conference slash caucus about this particular subject and get some kind of game plan together about it before we have a conversation with Ms. Miller. Because guidelines really have been established by the federal government. The state is the pass-through, they're the ones that have the money, and the cities will access those funds. And so, there are some guidelines already established regarding that. And, and then, lastly, Representative Jackson, if you will just keep us abreast of what the legislature, the Georgia Legislature is doing and/or having a conversation about electric vehicles, because some things may change depending on what you guys, what legislation you put forth. So, if you'll keep us abreast of that, that would be most appreciative. So, again, thank you so much, and I really appreciate it.
Again, Madam Pro Tim, so, one of the things I enjoy the most about our conversation when you first reached out to me about this particular topic, it lets me know that a city that has only twenty thousand-plus population, you all are thinking about the cutting-edge technology, right? And so, it warmed my heart when you and I had this initial conversation. But number two, to your point, we will stay engaged. This is a partnership. And, and the most important slide out of the few that I just shared with you is Ms. Miller, right? She is being overwhelmed with cities who do not even have an interstate going through them, right? They're just trying to position themselves to get some of these billions of dollars. And so, we need to make sure that Fairburn, the city of Fairburn, is part of this strategy and make sure that, because you are perfectly situated, and we are only a few miles from the airport, everyone's gonna pass through here. We know that. We're talking about hundreds of millions of folks gonna pass through here.
And then, one, one other thing, if you can help us have some sense of where Georgia Power and the EMCs are relative to this, you know, I know Georgia Power's been out at the forefront, and I know they've done, they're offering some business incentives for charging stations. So, they've got several different programs, and, but I don't know where the EMCs are. And if you have some sense of that, and what they're asking of the legislature regarding that, that would be helpful as well.
I'll, I'll take that as an item.
Are you able to just send us something back and write in it, and let it know we distributed? My quick question in the last two minutes was gonna be, the timeframe that the, I mean, the timeframe for the grant, most grants, you have a deadline or something that you can apply for, do you have any idea right now what that timeframe looks like?
So, again, Mayor, we, that's an excellent question. We just made this announcement two weeks ago. So, we're in the infancy stage. And so, the, the call that I received from Mayor Pro Tim was, was spot-on in terms of timing. And so, I don't know what the sunset or anything of that nature.
Just my concern is, my concern was that because of the, and I, I, I can't speak for this city, because we're literally in the middle of budget season, but we can find out what we stand and what's, what's included as relates to what, because getting the grant, getting the grant is not as, you fill out a piece of paper and it's submitted, it's a little more than that. And I'm trying to get an idea of how much time the staff has to dedicate to that in the middle of trying to, in this case, to actually fulfill the grant, the budget. But, but we'll find that out from Ms. Miller.
Right, right.
I just thought you may have known.
We, we do have a little time there, we do.
Yeah, yeah, you certainly do, because like I said, we just made the announcement two weeks ago.
Okay, all right, so, sir, thank you so much, and a great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, Assistant City Manager, excuse me.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. Thank you for allowing us to add this item onto our work session agenda. As you all know, we have seen an increase in COVID-nineteen cases, not only within Fulton County and across the state, but across the country. Also, within the last week, we have seen a surge in COVID-nineteen cases here at the city of Fairburn amongst our employees. So, at this time, I will ask Ms. Talisha Champagne to present the city administrators' proposed administrative pandemic leave policy. Tonight, this is just a presentation to Mayor and Council to start a conversation. Our goal would be to ask Mayor and Council to approve it at the next available council meeting in which it can be approved.
And can I, before Ms. Champagne, I mean, Ms. Champagne gets to the story, can I just do it? Because of the, because of the importance of it, if, you know, whatever questions you can't get in tonight, because, you know, between nine and seven, please make sure you get it to Ms., to the Assistant City Manager tomorrow, and probably the reason why, because of the urgency and the need for what we're dealing with right now with our COVID policy, and that, what it, what it actually impacts, we just wanna make sure that, under no circumstances, we not address every question so that when this comes at the council, we don't spend a lot of time outlawing over something that they will actually have to research, as in this case. But a lot of you guys know it, and I mean it, not, and I'm, I'm just gonna say it. Well, a lot of you guys probably hadn't noticed, Ms., Ms. Jamaica Chris actually spent, I, I, she spent all the Friday night and half of Saturday going through this, because I, I asked her a hundred questions, trying to make sure that we were not only compliant with CDC, but ensuring that our policy, in this case, did not interrupt any legal proceeding, which is why it can't be voted on at night, as a result of the question, it actually has to come back. any legal proceeding, which is why it can't be voted on at night, as a result of the question, it actually has to come back in the form of a resolution because of the different policies that it impacts. And so again, a lot, uh, I just wanna thank Ms. Chris on, on the front end, because your weekend was pretty much shot with dealing with this.
Absolutely, my pleasure. And the last thing I would just add is that we see this administrative pandemic leave policy as our effort to reasonably accommodate our employees, who we value, in the midst of this ever-changing pandemic. Um, the leave proposal is just another step in us helping to build the culture that we see and that we want here in the city of Fairburn. It's budget-neutral, requiring no adjustments to our operating or personnel budget. So I just thought I would preface that before Ms. Champagne begins her presentation.
Go ahead, Ms. Champagne.
Go ahead. Good evening, Mayor, um, Mayor Protem, and members of City Council. Thank you all so much for allowing me this opportunity this evening to briefly provide you, um, more so of a high-level overview of our current, um, policy that we are proposing. Um, as you mentioned, uh, Mayor, we did send out a memo to all city employees, um, as it relates our, to our efforts in mitigating the risk of COVID-19 within the workplace. But we wanted to also make sure that we had a formalized policy to go along with the guidance that we provided to, um, employees. And so this policy, as Ms., um, Chris mentioned, is really our way of showing, uh, members of council and all of our city employees how we are, as a city, responding to the pandemic, making sure that we are mitigating risk, and providing, um, safety and guidance protocols as it relates to COVID-19. Um, that's really the purpose of the policy. The policy also has brief definitions, but I would also preface this by saying everything that's listed here in the policy is in accordance with our current CDC guidelines as it relates to employees who may be exposed to COVID-19, who may come in close contact, um, with COVID-19, and/or who test positive for, um, COVID-19. One additional piece in this policy that was not in the memo is regarding employees who also are experiencing symptoms when they are becoming vaccinated, meaning if they are experiencing fever, any other symptoms. We also provided some guidelines in this policy, again, that are aligned with the CDC guidelines. One additional, um, piece that we really wanted to bring for tonight, which is in align with what Ms. Chris just mentioned, is how we are really trying to improve our culture, and how we are looking to really advocate and support our employees. And the, um, company-paid pandemic leave is a recommendation in which we are trying to do that. This particular recommendation as it relates to, uh, the company-paid pandemic leave is really a way for us to incentivize our employees who are currently vaccinated. Because as you know, the CDC has mentioned that vaccination does help improve our way of being able to, how we respond to the COVID-19 virus, and how it is lessening many of our symptoms where many of us are not ending up in the hospital. We are in no way, shape, or form requiring employees to, um, be vaccinated, but we do want to incentivize those employees who have made the choice to become vaccinated. So what we're recommending here in this section is that we are providing employees up to five working days per calendar year of company-paid pandemic leave. And again, it's up to five days. This leave is, has no leave accrual, there's no monetary value, there's no rollover, um, portion to it, there's no leave payout. This is a company-paid benefit, and as Ms. Chris mentioned, it has no budgetary impact. I also provided the guidelines in which an employee can, um, become eligible for this leave. And one piece that I do wanna mention is that we are making it available for our new hires without having any type of waiting period. It is also aligned to what we've currently done as it relates to our benefits, where we have new hires who are coming in, and they're no longer having to wait thirty days after the date of hire in the first of the month. Employees are now, um, eligible for their benefits the first of the month following their hire date. We have had, I can share with you, um, some employees who are new hires who have experienced COVID-19, and because they don't have the accrued leave, um, available for them, we've had a couple of employees who've had to sit out for about two weeks unpaid, and we, we certainly understand that that's a financial impact to them. So just trying to build our culture, we wanted to recommend something that will help, um, them as well. And so here are the guidelines as it relates to our new hires. We also provided just some general guidance. I would share that Human Resources is really trying to be in partnership with our department heads and our departments, and really making sure that we are spearheading, um, how we are guiding this policy. One, because we wanna make sure that we are keeping our employees' personal protected medical information confidential. Um, I can share with you that Human Resources, um, has reached out to many of our employees where they have either been in contact with someone, um, that has tested positive, or they themselves have tested positive. I checked on them, made sure that they was okay, and made sure that they understood that Human Resources was there to support them and providing what they need in the timeframe that they were out. We are also partnering with, um, department heads to make sure that they understand those employees' return-to-work status. So this is just kind of the general guidance that we're providing in this policy. Any questions?
Can I, go ahead, Ms. Chris, and then I wanna add one thing before I ask Council. Go ahead.
Absolutely. And just for clarity, we did the five days based on the initial required quarantine outlined by the CDC. The current policy states that if you experience any symptoms, um, you're supposed to quarantine for five days, at which time, if day six, your, uh, fever is reduced without the use of fever-reducing medication, you can return to the workplace. So the five days was based on CDC's requirement to quarantine.
Quarantine and isolation.
Yes.
And I just wanted to say, and you can, you can espouse on this before Council asks a question, uh, one of the things I wanna make, be careful about, ladies and gentlemen, as it relates to, as it relates to you hearing about, uh, employees talking about, you know John got COVID, yeah, what's happening, we, and I'm just warning publicly, uh, so they'll understand, between our department heads and pretty much employer, we still have to stay within what is known as HIPAA law. So we can't, you, you know, uh, the, the gentleman, the person that we talked about last weekend that was given authorization to use this thing. Okay, so I just wanna make, I mean, not that you don't know that, but I wanna make sure that's said publicly. You may hear people ask, "Hey, does John have COVID?" And somebody will not answer, and that's based because in the efforts of, we still have, we still have to buy by HIPAA law. So which means if that person, if that person wants to tell the world, fine to them, but we can't tell him. And so I just wanna make sure, because that became a real issue at, uh, at another place of employment recently, where the employee was really furious because they felt like that was none of nobody's business but theirs. And so I just wanna put that out there, you know, and then, uh, at this point, any member of council got a question?
Uh, yeah.
Let's go ahead.
Uh, yes. Um, well, Mayor, in response to your question, uh, following up another question, um, because this is a pandemic, and because we have to, um, um, what is it, contact trace? Right? So how does that, how does that fall within the guideline, um, just described by the mayor, right?
So we're, we are not required to contract, um, trace per se, but that is another reason why we want to keep this more in-house in Human Resources, so that we're able to provide a spreadsheet and also be able to communicate upward to administration as it relates to how many cases that we have either per department, um, so that they could be able to take a look at operations and be able to make a determination. So that's why we're trying to kind of keep this more in-house in Human Resources.
So how will, using myself as an example, um, if I am in contact with an individual that has COVID, will I be notified?
Thank you. Um, thank you for that question, um, Mayor Protem. That is another reason, uh, why we're keeping it, um, in-house with HR and in partnership with the department head. So for example, with the example that you just mentioned, if we have an employee that, say, got exposed to COVID in the workplace, or maybe got exposed or tested positive, and came into the workplace, and, and we're trying to figure out who they came in contact with, that is me on the phone speaking with that employee directly, so that the departments are not getting so much personal protected information. That is me also speaking with them to find out who they came in close contact with. Were you less than six feet? Were you fully masked? So that then I can reach out to those employees very discreetly, have a conversation with them, without releasing the name of the employee that was exposed.
Okay, very, very good. Um, so, several things. Would you share with us your presentation? Um, I need to kind of study some of the things that you said. I have a lot of questions regarding those, uh, but I'll reserve those, uh, Mayor. But the only other thing I wanna say is, um, what you are presenting here now sort of has a domino effect. Um, and, um, this also speaks to, uh, we probably need to revisit our telework policy, and then consistency with that, and then the process for retesting, right? So, I get COVID, I'm out for five days, uh, CDC guidelines, so I can come back. But, um, us as an organization, our due diligence, we probably should test, uh, or check temperature, or whatever that protocol might be. Um, so I just want to make sure that, you know, that policy is in place as well. Thirdly, um, given that we've got increased number of cases, and this is probably a governance issue, we probably need to re-review our ordinance regarding that. Um, but like, we passed it, um, I think it expired, was it December of, uh, this colleague's, December of twenty-twenty-one, where we talked about, uh, protocol for, uh, our community. We just probably need to revisit that and have some conversation about that. And we may, it may be dictated by the state, I don't know. Uh, but that's just another thing that needs to be reviewed, um, so if you guys can get on top of that as well, so that we are ready, uh, regarding that, and that you could bring it to Council if necessary. And then lastly, I don't understand, Ms. Champagne, what you were saying about no monetary impact. Okay, please explain that to me, because you're employed, you're earning a salary, you're on five days of leave. You're either gonna be earning sick leave, which is monetary, I think, right? Um, or whatever that, so would you please explain that statement to me, please?
Absolutely. So again, this, um, leave doesn't have any type of accrual, um, based to it. So we have already budgeted in every department's budget based on every employee's salary for the entire year. So if an employee takes up to five days of company-paid leave, there is no additional money that the city has to set aside in order to be able to fund this, because we've already funded their salary for the entire annual year.
Well, yes, we fund their salary, but we've also funded sick leave accrual and vacation accrual.
Yes, ma'am.
So is this five days, uh, in addition to, I know, I know, I know we're in budget season, and, um, so you guys may be adding it in, because this is an anomaly here? Uh, so can you just explain to me how that works?
Absolutely. It's more so of a classification, so let's just say we have an employee that tests positive today, and they need to stay out for the next five days. If they had not tested positive, they would already be coming in to work, collecting a paycheck. For HR purposes and for payroll, that leave will just so administrative leave to show that they're getting eight hours, but outside of that on their check, there's nothing that they would accrue monthly or bi-weekly at all. It's just more of, uh, I guess how you would classify FMLA leave, if somebody goes out on FMLA, you just.
Coverage.
You just use that coverage to show that's the number of hours that were utilized in that pay period.
All right, that, that, that clears it up substantially. So thank you so much, and thank you. And I look forward to receiving that presentation.
Welcome.
Okay. Ms. Davis, and then, go ahead. That's my, go ahead.
Yes. I just have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I am so impressed with our HR department, with our administrative department, the way.
Excuse me, Ms. Davis, Councilwoman Davis.
Stand here.
Yeah, because we won't be able to pick you up on the, um, when we're listening to it for minutes. Thank you.
I'll do this. Uh, I just wanna compliment our HR department in the way that you think, and how you lift up our employees, and think about the things that happen to them, um, in reference to their household, in reference to the funds that they, they are counting on to make, and not knowing they're gonna get sick. I mean, it seems like you've gone beyond the call of duty, and I, you know, I, I can't thank you enough. I read your report on the engagement, the Employee Engagement Committee. Awesome.
Thank you.
So I, I, I don't have any questions. Mayor Protem took care of all of the questions that I may have had, but.
Take that as a compliment.
Thank you.
That's a com, that's a compliment, Mayor Protem. So I wanna use this time to just thank you so much for being about Human Resources and taking care of our employees. Without our employees, we could not do what we do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does any other member of council have a question or a comment?
I just wanna echo what, uh, Councilwoman Davis said.
Well, actually, that's it.
No speech, no.
That, you go ahead, you got the floor, you got the floor, you next. Speaking to the mic.
I'm not, no, I don't have anything to say.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, Ms. Jones.
I, I'm done. I just said I wanted to echo what, uh, Ms. Davis said. I can repeat, though. I know, we all like, we all like to hear kudos, right? And the more times we hear them, the, okay.
I think, I think the, uh, Assistant City Manager had some additional comments he wanted to make.
I just wanna share that this policy, um, was birthed from feedback we received from our employees about previous policies or lack thereof. We do not want our employees to feel as though their jobs are negatively impacted because of a, uh, COVID-19 diagnosis. And so we felt this was the best thing that we can do, as we continue to elevate our standards and expectations in showing our employees that we value them. Mayor Protem, to address your question in reference to retesting to come back into the workplace, that is something that we evaluated, uh, when we put out the memo on Saturday, as well as with the policy. The only hesitation or reason why it was not included is, as you, you know, in the CDC guidelines, and what they state, and what we know about COVID, there's a such thing as long-haulers. And so you may have people that have a COVID-19 diagnosis, and they may test positive for thirty to sixty-plus days. And so we didn't want to impact our employees by having them out of the workforce that long. Uh, we did, and we wanted to make sure that if they are asymptomatic, no fever, that they could come back under the stipulation that they wear a mask.
Uh, that, that is fantastic to know, and I'm glad you did, uh, mention that about the long-haulers. Uh, I totally agree. Um, and as long as we are following CDC guidelines, um, that would be terrific. And I would also suggest, um, that, um, you and, um, Mr., um, our Fire Chief, um, and, uh, Mr. Phillips, that the three of you, uh, be in constant contact with the Fulton County Board of Health, um, just to ensure, you know, that we are on top of, because this is moving really fast. Um, and, um, and then if we just have all those things that I mentioned before in place, so that we are able to respond.
Absolutely. And we attend a weekly meeting every Friday morning at ten AM, it's virtual with AFSEMA, and so there are a number of representatives from the counties and cities around, and we get up-to-date, um, information in reference to the COVID numbers within Fulton County.
Fantastic, fantastic.
And, and one last note, too, for anybody that's looking for updated information, the Fulton County Board of Commissioners, who norm, who in this case has the Board of Health with them at their meetings, uh, every, uh, first and third Wednesday, coincidentally, I believe, is this week as well, you can get a, uh, literally an hour, hour and a half of questions and answers to COVID, which is what Ms. Chris, they'll end up covering that following Friday, uh, all the other representatives. But if you want a, a real, uh, I'd say in-depth, in-depth conversation about that, if you listen to the Board of Commissioners meeting, and normally it's within the first, shortly after public comment, they'll go into their COVID, uh, you know, COVID period as it relates to where the county stands. So, uh, just, that was just information, additional information. But, uh, if there's no other questions, uh, at this time, we're gonna end our, uh, City Council workshop, and we'll convene sharply at seven. I'll just remind those men and women in the public, you will turn your cell phones to the silent position, and we'll start sharply at seven o'clock.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, Ms. How, is Ms. Howell here? That's the Howell's wife? Okay. I don't see her. I've got seven o'clock sharp. We'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. Ms. City Clerk, would you please call the role of the City Council?
Yes, sir, Mayor. To the public tonight, we're having technical difficulties with our streaming. Meeting will be aired promptly after conclusion of this meeting. The Honorable Mayor Protem Hattie Portis Jones.
Present.
The Honorable Pat Pala.
Present.
The Honorable Alex Heath.
Present.
The Honorable James Whitmore.
Present.
The Honorable Linda J. Davis.
Present.
The Honorable Ulyssa Smallwood.
Absent.
Mr. Mayor, you have a call.
Okay, if they want, please stand and I'll, it's up. Ms. Howell not here, I'll go ahead and do it. Move out here. Father, we coming for your present with Thanksgiving. We enter to your course of praise. Father, we thank you for the meeting we're about to commence tonight for the City Council, dear Father of the city of Fairburn. We just pray, dear Father, that, again, the word says, pray for those in authority that we live a peaceful life. We pray for every elected and appointed official in this government, every department head and every employee. And we thank you that the business will be handled tonight in decent order in your name. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. At this point, we'll have, is there any, we'll have any presentations or proclamations at this point? Can I entertain a motion to adopt the City Council agenda?
So move.
Motion's by, motion's made by Mr. Heath. Is it, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? That motion carries. At this point, we'll ask for the approval of the City Council minutes. Give me one second, ladies and gentlemen. A City Council meeting that commenced on July the eleventh, on the July 11, 2022, is there a motion?
So move.
Mr. Whitmore has made a motion to approve that, second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. Any corrections or any comments by council? Seeing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? That motion carries. At this point, Ms. James, is there any public comment?
No, sir, we have no speaker.
No speakers at this? Okay. At this point, members of council, we'll go to our first item.
The first item is FY 2021-2022 Budget Amendment Retention Bonus. This is for mayor and council to approve the ordinance to amend the FY 2021-22 budget to provide for a one-time $3,000 retention bonus for police and fire. It's from the Finance Department.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and citizens of Fairburn.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I come before you today to amend the fiscal year 2022 budget and establish the ordinance. Currently, our FY 22 budget in our general fund is $21,618,810. The budget amendment would increase the budget to $21,924,107, an increase of $305,360. This budget amendment will impact two departments, police and fire. This amendment is to cover the cost of the Public Safety's $3,000 retention bonus that was approved in our last council meeting. Police budget will increase by $155,929 and fire's budget would increase by $149,431. Our revenues will also be adjusted to account for the increase in budgetary expenditures. The adjustments will be in our tax revenue line. It will be adjusted by $305,360 to offset the increase in expenditures. Mayor and council, we bring this request to amend the fiscal 2022 budget to fund the Public Safety Retention Bonus. The staff would like for you to approve this amendment so that we may continue to provide excellent services to the residents of the city of Fairburn. Thank you and I yield my time for any questions.
Okay. Members of council, you have before you for mayor and council to approve the ordinance to amend fiscal year 2021-22 budget to provide for a one-time $3,000 retention bonus for police and fire. Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion's made by Mr. Heath, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pala, any comments or questions by council? Seeing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Our next item?
Next item, this is SOFA Smart City Digital Display Installation. It's for mayor and council to approve the installation of two digital kiosks as a part of the pilot project to provide neighborhood navigation, community and event announcements, pedestrian and transportation data, metrics, polling and business advertising within the downtown historical commercial district. Funds are from the National Endowment for the Arts with a $10,000 matching grant. This is from Economic Development.
Before, before I bring the item to the floor, I'm going to go ahead, Ms., I'm going to yield to the department here and let you go ahead and speak about it.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, City Council and citizens.
Good evening.
The item before you was brought to the mayor and city council during a work session and we received some valuable input, on May 10th, we received some valuable input and feedback and we provide those updates in addition to presenting this agenda item. The SOFA navigational system is a part of the National Endowment for the Arts, Challenge America Arts Engagement in American Communities Grants. The purpose of the AEAC grant is to provide funding for innovations in implementing placemaking strategies which showcase the history, arts and entertainment. Fairburn's Economic Development Department applied for and received a matching grant from the National Endowment of the Arts to implement a pilot program to showcase Fairburn's downtown districts' histories, art and entertainment using the SOFA system. Matching funds were allocated in the fiscal year 2022 budget. The digital technology was submitted for review and received unanimous approval from the Main Street Board of Directors in January 2022 and the Arts Advisory Board on February 17, 2022.
What am I doing? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. You're still going, go ahead.
Did it go? Okay.
Keep going.
One of the important feedbacks that we received from mayor and council is the actual kiosk. The kiosk, as initially presented, was a modern representation. We went back to the drawing board to add historic pictures and elements to make it more in keeping with the recommendations that we received. The benefit of the SOFA system is that it provides connectivity, connecting people to our local businesses and amenities and it is key to cultivating an experience that will keep visitors coming to Fairburn's downtown historic commercial district. It also incorporates the Main Street approach. SOFA navigation system combines key fundamentals for promotions and advertising in an interactive way. More importantly, it provides data analytics to inform decision, decisions relating to economic development, urban planning, public transportation and more. And let's talk specifically about the data analytics. Pedestrian foot traffic, it gives us real-time information into pedestrians who are going in and about our downtown area. So these are the, okay, example of the digital advertisements. It also provides us with mobility data. The mobility data reveals information about how citizens are navigating our city, whether by car, bike, foot or public transportation. And lastly, it also gives us insight into restaurant revenues. It allows us to have greater insight into spending activities, demographics and strength of our locally-owned establishments. This is an example of some of the advertisements that are available, both the digital to our businesses and then the static would be companies that want to invest in the actual rap of the SOFA signage. Civic Economics, a research firm, found that when patrons support locally-owned stores, it generates four times as much revenue to the local economy than shopping and dining at a national chain, which is valuable information for us in terms of our local economy. Other factors to consider is that we have more than 51 destination points throughout the downtown historic district. Now, one of the things that is on the kiosk that you may not be able to see is that it will provide wayfinding data. So every business in the downtown area will be listed on this kiosk as where is the points of how to get there. This is a pilot, another consideration is that this is a pilot project which allows flexibility in the placement of the kiosk and whether we decide as a city to continue with the project or to remove the platforms. We also must consider that this is a project that is grant-funded through a matching grant. The initial $10,000 was budgeted for fiscal year 2022. The matching portion of $10,000 will be paid upon request. The matching portion of ten thousand will be paid upon request by the AEAC grant. To date, forty-eight hundred dollars has been spent on the signs. To not move forward means that we forfeit ten thousand dollars in grant monies and would not show good faith with our grantor, the National Endowment for the Arts. The project is also revenue generating. Based upon the number of businesses we onboard, the city receives twenty percent back annually. The SOFA has also a great track record in terms of onboarding businesses. In fact, the SOFA team enrolls at a rate of forty to fifty percent. They are currently throughout the Atlanta metropolitan area. Other cities include the city of Sugar Hill, the city of Atlanta, the city of Powder Springs, the city of Fayetteville, and they are rolling out a robust, um, program in the city of Augusta. We have collaborated with various stakeholders, as well as our staff, to identify two key places to put these kiosks as a pilot project. The feedback indicates that the best placement will be, one, the pedestrian area near Oz Pizza, which would be roughly eleven Northwest Broad Street. The second location would be the alleyway near the Metropolitan, the municipal court building on the Washington Street side. Both locations have tested well with our advisory councils and boards for assisting with gathering the metrics that are desired and as locations to promote and advertise our businesses. Respectfully, it is the staff's recommendation that mayor and city council move forward to approve the installation of the SOFA digital displays within the downtown historic commercial district. Are there any questions?
I'm gonna bring the item to the floor. Members of council, you have before you, the staff recommends that the mayor and council approve the installation of the SOFA digital displays within the downtown Fairburn Historic Commercial District in the designated two areas. Is, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by, uh, Mr. Heath. Uh, any questions or comments by council? Ms. Davis? And Ms. uh, Ms. Jones afterwards?
Yes. Uh, you mentioned the pilot. How long will the pilot program be? And what would be, what are you looking for in that pilot to determine whether to keep or not to keep?
So the pilot project would be for two years. They show that two years gives us enough time to place them appropriately and to get continuous data. What we're looking for in the data is to show us not only the metrics that we would have on an ongoing basis, which we could provide to council as a resource in terms of future decision-making about economic development, traffic, where to put other projects and infrastructure, but also to make sure that our community is enjoying this process, this platform. So if we'd get feedback that, oh, well, you know, it's great, but it's not very useful, then we will make the decision, we own the platforms, we can keep them in place, and just choose not to expand to add additional components. If there is success, then there are opportunities to apply for additional grants to expand the program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jones? Then Mr. Whitmore?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. So this is a federal grant, correct? NEA is a federal department?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, and what are our reporting obligations to NEA regarding the use of the funds?
Once we are completed with the process, September, we are to, uh, report as to what we have done with the funds thus far. And that's why the timing at this juncture becomes very important. Um, we need to go ahead, um, if we are going to move forward with the program, we will need to go ahead and submit the invoice for the remaining purchase of the plan. I, um, around February, I updated to them as to where, where we are in the, um, the process. Um, and so at this point, we just, we will have to implement the, uh, platforms or advise that we are not moving forward.
Right, and then has NEA, um, delineated what it is that they would look for, or how will they measure success?
That's a wonderful question. When we first started, the whole part of applying for this grant, they were looking for innovative strategies. It was during COVID, and they were looking for ways that we can continue to engage with the community when we were not able to come together in person. So this SOFA sign, when they saw it, they were excited about it. They thought it was an innovative strategy for enhancing community engagement and being creative about how to continue our communication with the public.
All right, well, um, and I appreciate, um, you reevaluating, um, the type of sign.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, because, you know, I was one who had a reaction to the other ones. I just thought it didn't fit.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, you know, downtown Fairburn, so thank you for that. Uh, and I am elated and quite surprised uh, to hear you say that there are fifty-one destination points downtown?
Yes, ma'am.
I cannot wait to see the list of those fifty-one. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, so downtown Fairburn is larger than we think.
Yes, ma'am.
Which is good.
Um, if I may, I can.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right, thank you. Um, and, and then lastly, you said that, um, we are only required to give a final report at the end of the pilot?
Well, um, the updates, um, right now, we're at that point where we will need to provide an update as to what we, um, there are no date specifics, but there is a deadline.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Uh, and then lastly, uh, in order to get at some of the data and the matrices, matrices that you described, are you asking, uh, citizens to do a survey?
No, ma'am, and that's the beauty of the, the platforms.
Mm-hmm.
It picks up the, there are sensors on the inside to measure movements and metrics. In addition to someone coming up to the device, it measures that, but it also measures, uh, pedestrian traffic and transportation traffic.
All right. Um, well, then, I'll only ask, um, if this body approves this, if you would provide us with interim reports?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to see, you know, how it's going, um, in the process or during it.
Yes, ma'am.
But thank you so much, and thank you for, um, reevaluating and responding to the questions we had last time.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Whitmore?
Oh, I had no questions, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I saw your hand. Did any other member have a question? Or comment? Seeing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Thank you so much. At this point, uh, I'll ask for the finance, I mean, Finance Director's report. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and citizens of Fairburn.
Good evening.
I come before you this evening to provide the city of Fairburn's financial report for the month ending June thirtieth. The city of Fairburn's general fund concludes its nine months of operation of twenty twenty-two with four point nine million in net cash flows. To date, the general fund has generated eighteen point seven million dollars in revenues with thirteen point eight million in general fund expenditures. As of June thirtieth, we've collected eighty-six percent of our year-to-date revenues, which is an eleven percent increase from last month. To date, the city has expensed only sixty-four percent of its budget. Out of the twenty-one million dollars of revenue budgeted, the city has collected eighteen million, seven hundred fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred sixty-three dollars. In the month of June, the city has collected one million, seven hundred fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred sixty-four dollars of revenues. As of June thirtieth, the city's year-to-date expenditures is thirteen million, eight hundred ninety thousand, six hundred seventy-six dollars, which equates to sixty-four percent of the budget. We have currently collected ninety-eight percent of our billed property taxes this year. Currently, the staff is sending out mailers to collect the remaining two percent. And the city's Fairburn's Enterprise Fund concludes its nine months of twenty twenty-two operating budget with roughly three hundred thousand in net cash flows. To date, the Enterprise Fund has generated fourteen point seven million revenues with fourteen point four million in Enterprise Fund expenditures. At the end of June, the city collected seventy-three percent of its year-to-date revenues, which is an eighteen percent increase from last month. We've currently expended seventy-one percent of our budget. Our current Enterprise Fund revenue budget is twenty million, three hundred, three thousand, seven hundred seventy-five dollars. And to date, the city has collected fourteen million, seven hundred fifty-two thousand, one hundred twenty-seven dollars. In the month of June, the city collected two million, four thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars. This, the city's year-to-date expenditures is fourteen million, four hundred seventy-four thousand, one hundred and seven dollars, which equates to seventy-one percent of the budget. This concludes my financial report, and I'm open to any questions council may have.
Does any member of council have any questions as relation to the finance report?
Yes, Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Um, Mr. Davis, what did you say, um, when you articulated the property tax collection? Um, what did you say you were going to do to obtain the remainder?
Currently, staff is putting, sending out mailers to the remaining, um, businesses and citizens who have not paid their property taxes so that way we can collect those revenues.
Right. Uh, and then how are we doing in collecting hotel motel tax? You know, we, in the past, had had some challenges with that?
We are currently doing very well collecting right now.
Okay.
As most people internally know, I am all about collecting revenues that the city is owed. So I am digitally working on making sure that we collect all of our taxes that is owed to the city and making sure we set policies and procedures that we can follow to bring in those revenues that the city of Fairburn are owed.
Okay, so we're doing better than we have in the past?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, and can you articulate what percent? I mean, are we greater than seventy-five for hotel motel?
We've collected more than our projected budget.
Okay. All right then. Uh, let's see, and, uh, yeah, that concludes my questions. Thank you.
Any other member of council? Uh, with, and I want to think, I want to add to that is that, and the city, the city administrator come, uh, probably discussed this during the budget season, uh, budget season, during the budget period when we're going over the budget, uh, that, uh, he wants to make sure that as a governing body, we understand the difference between a fund balance and a reserve, and a reserve balance, a major difference between the two.
Yes, ma'am.
And we'll be talking about, uh, setting a policy that will adjust to ensure that, uh, both accounts are addressed appropriately for unforeseen conditions and unforeseen emergencies, which in this case, right now, the base, looking at the climate change and everything that we're dealing with, we have to be in position to deal with unforeseen conditions and something that's, something that's massive and major, major pipes that are busting, look like, all over the place. Uh, we're, uh, and so we're gonna have a discussion in great detail during our budget season about that particular area that's real important, and you'll understand, I'll let the city administrator explain in great detail why that's so imperative, uh, to him personally and as well as the Finance Director.
Mayor, uh, could you also ask if we could, um, uh, have a recommendation on what's, um, best practice? Best practice regarding both of those funds, what, what should be our standard or the goal we should be striving for?
Um, the current goal is two months of your operating budget, but the policy that City Administrator's Office and I are working on is to make sure we have three months worth because we would like to, um, make sure that we're covered.
And so, um, okay, and we'll talk more about it during the budget season because my, my policy is a little higher than that. That's based off my wife's professional, profession that she's in. But anyway, we'll talk about it in a greater detail. Thank you so much for that report. At this time, I'll ask for the City Administrator's report that will be done by the Assistant City Administrator.
Good evening, again, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. I am pleased to present to you the City Administrator's Report, which will provide a summary of administrative activities completed in the months of May and June. A copy of the report is included in your agenda packet as well as online under the City Administrator's page for public viewing. In May, the City Administrator's Office facilitated a successful senior leadership retreat at our GMA office to focus on team building, workplace culture, and to build on the strategic plans and objectives set forth before by mayor and council. City Hall was successfully reopened to the public and re-returned to in-person council meetings. Dunkin' Pool and Splash Pad opened for the summer season with over nine hundred patrons the first weekend. We are continuing our proactive recruitment for all vacant positions in the city to help elevate our service delivery. In the month of May, we onboarded a total of fourteen new employees across both the Parks and Recreation and Economic Development Departments. In June two thousand twenty-two, the mayor and staff facilitated a successful introductory meeting with new and current appointees to the Downtown Development Authority. The meeting highlighted new and ongoing growth and development initiatives. On Friday, June seventeenth, the Fire Department celebrated the addition of Squad Twenty-two to its fleet with a push-in ceremony. Our classification and compensation study kickoff meeting was held on June thirteenth. Current job descriptions and pay schedule is currently being reviewed. We anticipate the vendor will present to mayor and council its findings at our first meeting in September. Installation of the new ten-ton HVAC system has been completed at our youth center, so we're excited about that. And additionally, during the month of June, we onboarded nine new employees across seven departments to include, across several departments, to include both Parks and Recreation, Police Utilities, and Streets. Additionally, I would like to take this opportunity to introduce you to our interim direct, um, Director of Planning and Zoning, Ms. Rebecca Kiefer, if you could stand up, please. Ms. Kiefer comes to us from the CPL team with over twelve years of experience in planning and zoning. I can tell you all that we are in good hands under her leadership as she continues with this move transition of our activities and that the City Administrator's Office is actively recruiting, um, to fill our vacancy and as the direct, and our Director of Planning and Zoning. So thank you, Ms. Kiefer.
Thank you.
You too.
Um, and with that, that concludes the City Administrator's Report, and I'll entertain any questions.
Does anyone have any questions regarding the City Administrator's Report? Okay, seeing none, I'll start with our closing remarks. Mr. Whitmore, I'll let you start today, sir.
No comments, Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Heath?
No comment.
Ms. Davis?
No, no comments.
Mr. Palin?
No comments.
And Mayor Pro Tim?
No comments.
And I have, uh, one second, I did have two comments. I lost my page, sorry about that. Want to just make two comments, uh, again, uh, just for the public, so, and the members of council as well. Uh, and Ms. Chris, I can't remember, is that Fulton County is, I believe Fulton County is actually broadcasting the, the local office sales tax meetings between the mayors and the, on Fulton FGTV, so if you want to see it, but that's basically the only televised. Did you have anything you want to comment about laws?
Um, yes, sir, they will be televised at ten AM on Friday. This, I believe, is going to be the last public meeting that they have for a while. After that, it will be between the negotiating teams.
Okay, so I just want to make sure we were, and, uh, very shortly, uh, I'll, I'll have the City Administrator, uh, as along with the Finance Director, make sure that we're aware of the, uh, schedule for our budget, budget meetings, because I want to give members of council time to plan for anything they may have to do. But with that being said, uh, we have no executive session. Can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Their second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, have a good night. Thank you for coming tonight. Good seeing you, Pastor.